I always wonder if I could cover my area.
I'll call the meeting to order for October 24th. Please rise for the pledge of leaptons.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the judiciary, government, and our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call will show that all commissioners are present this morning. Board members, the first item we have is the approval of the agenda. Mike, was there any changes?
Mr. Chair, there wasn't.
Okay.
There's approval.
Motion by Commissioner Clark.
Second.
Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. The next item we have is consent agenda. Before you, you have items one through 12.
Just in case anybody's sleeping, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Is that a warning for anything?
Is there feedback, I think there's feedback from something.
You're kind of a disco guy.
Anyway, items one through 12, are there any items in which board members would like to pull for further discussion, clarification, or any?
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like an explanation for 12. I mean, I'm not, it sounds great. I'm cool with what it means.
Okay, let's, let's just take it right now.
I don't care. I just want to know before the end of the meeting.
Good morning. I'm not sure what item 12 is.
Item 12.
The grant agreement with the Justice Department?
Oh, okay. I got a new grant coordinator on the 2021 Byrne J Grant. So she was going through the paperwork and she didn't have the certificate of insurance as form. I pulled it out of my file. Commissioner Clark was the board chair in 2021. She signed the form. I sent that in. It's not dated, so they're requesting a new form. So it's just to go with the 2021 grant that we already have.
Okay.
Just more of a paperwork upkeep thing.
Well, I need to sign that then, or?
You'll need to sign it and then we have to make sure it's dated.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd ask item number six. I shared with Mike and Steve. Mike, pay to have a discussion on that?
All right, and where would we like to put that? Do you want to handle it right away, or?
However you want to do it.
Okay. So I'll look for a motion to approve items one through 12 with the exception of six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Okay, Mike, we'll go with some clarification on that?
You do the consent one, yeah, I'll have Steve explain it.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this item is our lease agreement with the state on the 7th Judicial District. So the fourth floor of the courthouse is where the 7th Judicial District headquarters are located. It's a state office that is the ones that administer all of the courthouses within the 7th District that runs from here all the way up to the north of the border. The state, of course, likes to have those located in one of the courthouses and St. Cloud having a good T1 line is a place where they want to have that. And so it's been in our facility probably for 30 or 40 years. And so again, this is just an update on our lease agreement with the state for the rental of that, of that space.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, the big, you know, one, because we're having the discussion on the Justice Center, I thought it, I think a lot of people don't know that we're getting reimbursed for court services, so I thought that would be helpful for the public to know. And then I'm just curious, on the rate per square foot, how do we establish that? I mean, like, what's the going rate for normal commercial property? I have no clue.
For that, I'm going to turn to our facilities director. We thought he wasn't going to have to talk.
Oh, good morning, Chair Commissioners. Doing some research recently when we were looking at extension space, we were finding commercial real estate anywhere from $20 to $26 a square foot. So I think the 23 for the space that they have is reasonable. It's been on a 1% increase per year. I think over the last 15 years, that number has stayed consistent. We left it. The same for this one. The only change in the agreement was we added some language with regard to the Justice Center project that, you know, something might happen and we'd have to revisit a five-year plan perhaps. So that was the only change we made.
And then?
And again, Mr. Chairman, I just think it's good to have that conversation publicly, that they understand, number one, that we are getting reimbursed, and two, that it is comparable to
Yep.
normal commercial rates. Thank you.
One other question I had, so do they pay like a pro rata portion of the utilities to them? Or is it just strictly?
No, straight lease. They don't, we don't break out their utility bill or anything like that. Mostly just mechanically, I would have no way to do it, so
No.
we just include that all in a blanket lease cost.
You don't know what that utility costs for that building already?
They're all connected, so it's hard to parse one out.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, you know, I noticed staff time and obviously grounds keeping, snow blowing, I mean, all that stuff. It's certainly a good deal for them and it's part of the requirement on our behalf, but they're certainly not paying too much.
No, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, the only thing, you know, if they put in a specific work order to have space changed or a maintenance request or desks moved, those kinds of things, we bill back to them. But otherwise, you know, the facility cost itself is built into the cost of the lease, so.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioner, you?
I'll move a consent agenda, number six.
Motion on six?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. We'll move on to administration.
Mr. Chair, the first item is a resolution supporting the operation Green Light for veterans and, of course, Veterans Day is approaching. And again, this year, NACO, the National Association of Counties, and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers are asking counties to show their support for veterans by lighting up their facilities in green. And they really do this for two reasons. One is to honor our veterans, but secondly, to make veterans aware of the programs and services that we provide. So it's a two-part, there's two significant pieces to the Green Light for Veterans. The board did this last year, a similar resolution, and like last year, we will write, light up the face of this building, the pillars of the historic courthouse, and the entrance to the law enforcement center, and then light the entrance, entrances to the service center in green too. So I think we did a nice job with it last year and we intend to do that again this year if the board sees fit to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, whatever we can do, I assume we do something publicly telling people that we are doing it, because if they don't know why it's being done, that kind of misses the point. So I've included it in my column and stuff that people know, pays special attention to it. If they see the building lit up in green and they don't know what the purpose is, it kind of loses the point of it.
Yep, I think that's good. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just very glad we participate in this and it is a good way, and Commissioner Bertram, as you just said, I mean, it's important that we're communicating it out and staff did a good job with that last year. Hopefully, people will start recognizing this is something we do annually and perhaps also be reaching out to veterans they know as well.
I'm hoping to see the water tower on 94 in green, so we'll see.
It's a good, it's a good, we'll ask the city.
That's a good idea.
I'm sure they will. And the city did like to do some green lighting last year at our request, too.
Okay. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Again, the next, next item under administration is to consider membership in the Minnesota Rural Counties Organization. And I know we have Ms. Kilzer here, sorry, Ms. Kilzer here. And I will allow her to introduce anybody else.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us today. And we know you have a busy agenda, so we're going to do our presentation pretty quickly and then hopefully have time for any questions that you might have for us. So I'm Ann Kilzer with Capitol Hill Associates and this is my colleague Sam Walseth.
Hi there, Sam Walseth with Capitol Hill Associates.
So if you'd like to go to the next slide. So Minnesota Rural Counties is really focused on being the voice of rural counties across Minnesota. So as an affiliate of the Association of Minnesota Counties, MRC is kind of a subgroup of willing partners who want to bring special attention to issues that affect rural Minnesota differently than perhaps the metro area. So this slide shows the current members. We do have a few more counties that we anticipate joining in 2024. And this presentation was submitted prior to the October business meeting of MRC and they did elect new leadership. So they chose to have Luke Johnson from Pipestone County remain as the chair. He's been the chair for just over a year and they thought that with a change in staff over the past year and some continuity in leadership would be beneficial. The vice chair is Neil Peterson from Pennington County, so that's a change from the slide that's in front of you. And then Commissioner Bring from Marshall County has been the secretary treasurer for several years and they chose to retain her in that leadership role due to her familiarity with the finances and other aspects of the administration of MRC. You can go to the next slide.
Yeah, and this is, one year ago, the MRC had a retirement from their executive director. Dan Larson had been the longtime executive director of the MRC. He retired. And so MRC sought about figuring out how to move forward and they decided instead of a traditional executive director type position, they went with a contract firm like ours, Capitol Hill Associates. And so they brought our full team on board. That's our team, we've got me and Ann in front of you today. Rob Venosik, the tall guy over on the right, has been no stranger to the state capital. And Britta Torkelson is there as well, and she is actually the lead lobbyist for the MRC. But we work together as a team and provide a full support to the MRC.
Yeah, and I'd just add in regard to our team, Capitol Hill Associates has a deep history of working in intergovernmental relations. So many of the clients are public entities, various subdivisions of counties or cities and things like that. So our firm specifically has a lot of past history in working with local units of government. Go to the next slide, please. So I know that one thing is a consideration, of course, is the financial investment. And so dues range from $2,200 to $2,900 annually based on the county population. And it would come as no surprise to you, I'm sure, that if Stearns County chose to join, you'd be one of the larger counties. So the dues level would be $2,900. We don't anticipate that MRC is going to change the dues structure for 2024. At the October business meeting, that's the time that they would have made any changes and that was not an item of discussion at that meeting. So you could anticipate if you chose to join that your dues would be $2,900 annually. Just some of the services that we provide. So as Sam mentioned, we provide both administrative support and lobbying support to MRC. So I, as the administrative lead, provide that administrative support, organizing the meetings, which are a combination of virtual and in-person. We tend to meet monthly virtually during the winter months due to the legislative session being, or the legislature being in session during that time. And then more in-person meetings in the fall to kind of talk through what we anticipate will be coming up in the next legislative session. The business meeting is in October, as I mentioned. Several of the in-person meetings are conjoined with AMC events. So the policy committee meetings, the annual conference, MRC will have a separate meeting during those times. So that does help reduce your travel if you're participating in those other AMC meetings to back, piggyback on those. We do a lot of work with MRC in helping set the priorities and the lobbying strategy. Our team brings a really good lens to the work in the experience that our lobbying team has had over many decades at the capital and helping kind of identify what the priorities of MRC are most feasible in moving forward, given external factors like who, which parties are in leadership at the legislature and administration and things like that. So really lending our experience to those efforts and then the actual lobbying itself, of course, attending hearings that have issues that are of importance to MRC as well being, as well as helping coordinate testimony and things like that. In addition to the legislature, we also do a lot of advocacy with state agencies. Sam will talk a little bit about some of that work on some specific things, but keeping track of the state agencies, federal and state grant opportunities that might be available and of interest to MRC members. Another large portion of the MRC meetings tends to be just information sharing. So having rural counties have the opportunity to talk with their peers about issues, problem solving, sharing best practices on things that, again, affect rural counties maybe in a different way that they might affect the metro or are of greater importance. And so really being able to elevate that voice in speaking with one voice as rural counties when advocating at the legislature and with state agencies. And then also just providing regular updates on relevant information, again, kind of supplementing any information that the Association Minnesota Counties or NACO might be sending out that are of interest to all counties and really focusing in on strategies and services for rural members in particular.
All right. I think there should be one more slide before that last one. There we go. So part of our role as the lobbying team for the MRC is to help the MRC counties narrow down a focus of priority issues. And so when we came on board last December, we helped whittle down probably a top of mind list of maybe 15 to 20 items into some key priorities. And so last session, we really focused on county program aid, the transportation bill, broadband funding, and then drainage regulations. And we've seen some significant challenges to drainage authorities coming from the state capital. And so going forward this year, as Ann mentioned at our annual business meeting a few weeks ago, we were able to again help the group maneuver from, you know, a dozen or more top of mind priorities down to really a focus of two key priorities with a subset of another two. And so drainage challenges maintain, is still a top of mind issue and a priority for us. We expect to see legislation again next session that would remove or kind of challenge drain, local drainage authority, move it to the state level. We want to work on notification and transparency. That's what the advocates are pushing counties and drainage authorities on, but we need to, to push back in that process. So we spend a lot of time at the drainage workgroup meetings and we know there'll be some legislative challenges on that front. We also know there are a lot of challenges around solid waste and permitting, demo, landfill permits. So that's another top of mind issue that the group decided to prioritize on. In addition to those two kind of top two-tier issues, housing, childcare, and all things kind of infrastructure are top of mind for the group that met in October. And so those would be another subset of issues that they want us to focus on, to do more study, research, and really take a look at the legislation that's moving on those topics in 2024. We know it's a bonding year at the state capital. We know there will be a lot of talk about capital investment and infrastructure. And so those are top of mind issues for, for the group heading into the next legislative session.
Yeah, and I'd just add to that, MRC does have a broader legislative platform. It's about eight pages of different priorities that have been identified throughout the past years that MRC has been in existence and that is posted on the MRC website. So if you're interested in seeing that broader platform from which those priorities were garnered, that is available on that website. And I think that's really the information that we wanted to share and again, wanted to make sure that you had time for any questions for us that are, you know, of most importance to you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, if we'd be interested in doing this, I guess the question would be, would you allow some of us to attend like one of the meetings, just to get a feel for what?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump on that. Excited to answer because it's a, it's a yes. So anybody's welcome to attend the MRC meetings. The next meeting of MRC will be on Sunday evening before the AMC full annual conference starts. And we'd welcome you to attend and can ensure that you get the agenda for that meeting. I can send it to your administrator. And then, yes, of course. And so one thing I failed to mention is with membership, the way it works is each county appoints a delegate who has voting rights and then alternates. And all alternates are welcome to attend as well. So if you attended the meeting, you'd be welcome to participate in the conversation, of course, but if there were an actual vote, only members would have the opportunity to vote on any business in front of the group.
Steve, when I'm responding to that, I've sat through those meetings a number of times down at AMC, although I'm sitting at the kids' table. So and so we don't have the option of voting, but oftentimes, yeah, very relevant issues that we're hearing about. So Commissioner?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Really glad that you're here for, for the public and for any members who don't know you too. You've got lots of long-term experience and really very much appreciate the, the work and your willingness to come in front of us. I think MRC was really very lucky that you said yes. And I know it's a two-year commitment, so everybody's still kind of feeling each other out. Like Joe, I've gone to a number of the meetings at the outskirts. I can't even say it's just so the little kids though. And last, last time, I think I was by the door because it was pretty full. And so I've got a few questions. You've addressed part of it. One is, in some enthusiasm, there are members who are probably talking about things they personally care about versus topics that are really legislative or so-called in our lane. And I know you've worked on that in terms of the platform. So that's one question. Another question is, how are you leveraging, would you talk about, I know how you are, would you talk a little bit about leveraging the relationships with MICA and AMC? We are a MICA county. Right now, there are no MICA counties are part of this, not because nobody cares, but we've got kind of a broader array of things that we work on and clearly the issues are interconnected, both AMC work on them. As we in Minnesota thankfully, we are elected nonpartisanshipally and you're talking about partisan place and both within MICA and AMC, there are both senators and representatives that represent both parties. I know that's been a little bit of a challenge, given what counties you have right now. How are you helping those members who may or may not, we are a robust state, we do, our term limits our election, so it does change? Can you just talk a little bit about working with those members and, and within that broader context?
Yeah, maybe I could take that last question, kind of dovetailing into the first question too about kind of keeping it between the lines. One of the, the things we brought to the group is a renewed focus on county business, things that are attainable at the state legislature. And I think Commissioner Clark, you mentioned enthusiasm and sometimes conversations can get a little unwieldy, but our role is to help bring that conversation back into what is really legitimate county business that has a potential impact at the state capital and what can we actually work on. So that's a role that we bring in as, as outside consultants to help the group stay focused and to narrow top of mind, exciting issues into things that are really more tangible. We do have some mixed county representation. It is where we see Republicans and Democrats who do represent some of our member counties. And so, and we have also built our business at the capital, working very bipartisanly. I've been doing this for 23 legislative sessions down at the capital. And so we work with whoever the voters send us and then we're going to bring that legitimate county business to the, to those legislators and see how best we can maneuver through the capital process.
Yeah, and to talk about both AMC and MICA as well, one thing I would add to what Sam said is currently in the legislature, a lot of the Republican members are in the minority who represent greater Minnesota. That tends to be, right now, the legislative makeup tends to be that the legislators who are representing rural Minnesota are in the minority. So that's where we find it really helpful to send county commissioners to the capital with a, with a strong theme of one or two or three priorities so that those legislators who represent rural Minnesota have a really clear idea of the issues that are top of mind and being in the minority can also advocate together to have a common voice when working with their leadership as well. In regard to the question around MICA and AMC, so MRC is an affiliate of the Association of Minnesota Counties. So our lobbyists work really closely with the AMC lobbyists. Again, a lot of common priorities, but really being able to bring to the capital how something might affect rural Minnesota in particular. So amplifying that message, whereas AMC has more of the, has to balance both metro and rural issues when speaking with legislators. MICA is another organization that we work very closely with. We have conversations on a regular basis around legislative strategies and things like that. We find it very helpful to break through the noise at the capital to find alignment with other organizations as best we can. This particularly, when it comes to local government issues, the more we can be speaking with one voice to your peer elected officials who are working at the capital, the better it is for everybody. So we work in coalition as often as we can. And again, it's not usually that MRC is adversarial to anything that MICA or AMC is doing, but it's really being able to say, and in addition to that, here's why it's particularly important to rural counties.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ann used the word coalition and we are very fond of coalitions. Bring a friend when you go to the capital. It's a, it's a tough, tough environment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start by making a motion that we do join the MRC.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion and a second and then we'll open it up for discussion.
And one, I like the way you said that we work with the people that the voters send us. That's a nice way of saying it. That's a reality, isn't it? It ages me, but I remember Capitol Hill Associates, I believe when they started in the late 80s when I was in the Minnesota House. So certainly you're the second generation. And then seeing names like Torkelson and Venosik, certainly that's second generation of folks that have been around the capital for a long time. I think it positions us well with MICA and the AMC. You know, some people say, well, how many organizations do you want to join? When I was on the city council, I was on the League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors for three years and we belong to small cities and some of, well, again, if you're all working together, if you're doing what you should be doing, MICA is unique, we're a unique county, very metro, obviously in the east part, very rural in the western part, we're a big county. And so, and I think it's, I think it positions us well to be a part of the overall umbrella organization, AMC, and then MICA and MRC. And obviously now, more than ever, counties like us need someone watching out for us all the time, so. And I appreciate the fact that we'll be able to have a, a role as a delegate or alternate and certainly would welcome that opportunity to serve the board members, so to say, at some point. But I think, I think it would be a good. And despite Chair Johnson being the chair, Commissioner Persky and I serve on the Highway 23 Coalition with him, so despite him being chair, I think, I still think we should join it.
Lee, did you have something?
Yeah, I think it's redundancy. And I'll be voting again.
Okay, that's fine. Could we go to the, one of the first slides with the map?
Oh, sure. That was the second slide in the presentation.
If it's possible. Well, I don't know, who's in control?
Can you do it from that computer right there?
The one with, then, keep going. There, that's the one. If you take a look at the map, you could walk from Iowa to Canada with the exception of Stearns County. Okay? So if we fill that in, you'd have a continuous line all the way across the state. That being said, if you take a look as well, most of those counties That being said, if you take a look as well, most of those counties, with the exclusion of a couple, are predominantly ag counties. And I, and I certainly do think, you know, especially when we get out to our outer two districts, we have a very strong ag focus. And I think that that would be a voice that, that also would speak well for some of the issues that we have. One of the concerns I have is also about the priorities, and we've done this in the past, too, is where you cite two or three strong priorities. The point being is that oftentimes, those top priorities don't get discussed. So those other issues that are out there, those are very important because it might be your time to strike, because you never know what's happening in the legislature. One particularly strong legislator might be carrying something and gets for a vote, and you've got to make that strike when it happens. Because, I mean, there's issues, for example, ag housing, okay? We need housing for our ag workers, pelt, the water, aid to townships, because of the bridge and the infrastructure that they have aging, and so broadband, obviously, is another one. So again, having those priorities are important, but anything that can possibly help, don't, don't, don't close your mouth to it, because it might be the only opportunity to get it done. So that's all I have to say. With that, oh, no, I got two hands going.
I was just going to make a comment, you know, and, you know, we can give it a try and, you know, see how it goes, and we can look at it again in a year or two.
And Mr. Chair, actually, that's part of what I was going to suggest. And Lee, I really appreciate, and I don't want you to think your comments were just dismissed, because there is a real question about whether or not this is entirely duplicative, and I think that's fair. We are working on all of these issues. MICA is going to be expanding some of the work that relates to environmental, including in our most rural areas. And yet, I do think that this helps leverage in some areas. I mean, these are areas, the commissioners in each of the counties up there are, are working with our AMC staff, and I think, you know, there's, we only have so much bandwidth. And so it's really helpful having that additional expertise, recognizing this does not replace the, the work that we significantly do through both MICA and AMC. So I'm supportive of it. I do have, I remain having some concerns, not about you two. I mean, Capitol Hill's great, and I think trying it out and seeing, Luke, in spite of where he's from, is fabulous. I love working with him. He serves on the AMC board, so I get to work with him regularly there. And I know that we do have a few counties that are going to feel pressured to join now. They've spoken directly to me about if we go, then they're going to feel like they have to, so we have to work on this together. And hopefully, that will actually do better for all of our people. It isn't just our rural parts, it's all of Stearns County, and look forward to getting to work, believing we're passing this, look forward to getting to work with you. And I know Steve is interested, I'm interested in helping out in whichever way I can, I know Joe will, and I bet even Lee will, too.
And just one other comment I was going to make is, you know, and this might be a, you know, plus for MICA, too, you know, that we have the rural arm, you know, so we can kind of advocate a little bit, you know, together on some of those issues, even, you know, even though it's AMC and MICA and, you know, all these organizations. But I think there's an opportunity at least to try.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And I want just, I just want to echo my concerns, too, about bringing the personal and political items that are outside our lane, whether it's at the state or national level, which we have no control over, and, and we, some people are very passionate about those issues, but it doesn't necessarily pertain to county business.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Clark, I'll help, too. I'll help out, too.
Oh, I thought, I thought I said in addition to you.
But the real concern is, I know Commissioner Clark would not vote during attending your meetings as a non-member, but I'm not so sure about Commissioner Persky.
Just in faces.
And he's dying to say something, so when now as a member, he can vote and say something.
And believe it or not, I have spoke at those meetings.
I don't find that hard to believe at all. You know, I think you would probably, you know, the Be Kind to Animals group, you probably spoke to them.
And actually, Mr. Chair, I do, I do want to reinforce, there's been a number of legislative items that you all have been good in conjunction with Luke and the leadership team about reaching out to others that may not be on that board. I know I've come and been asked to come and present on several different items, and that, that does help us with those relationship building and reinforcing, as you're talking about, you know, if we can leverage those relationships in the most positive way, that can be a good thing.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Clark made a good point. This is going to position you to have other counties join, because we are joining, so use that to your advantage, but don't forget Stearns County.
All right. I'll call the question. Lee, are you ready?
No, I'll vote against it. I think this is redundancy. In addition, I was here when we joined MICA, and what MICA did, and I think they still do it this way, when they have a, when they're entering into a situation with a county that hasn't been a member before, initially, that county comes in at a reduced rate.
That's true.
It isn't quite the infamous TV free introductory offer, but it's at least an opportunity for the prospective member to get a sense of what's important to them. I'll be voting against this. This isn't, I appreciate your private sector, your public sector people, but it, I think it could be a better marketing aspect, and if you're selling new members this way, are you selling the legislature? I'm a little disappointed in the presentation, but go ahead and vote, it'll be four to one.
With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
You got that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, we miss our former member, Jeff.
Right, it would, yeah, I, I agree.
Mr. Chair, the next item is the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Is, the organization is funded in the proposed 2024 budget in the amount of $10,000, and we have not funded the RSVP program since, I think, 2017 or 18. 17 and 18, I believe, we, we reduced and then, and then brought it to zero, and so, but we saw a fit to include an appropriation in the proposed 2024 budget, so we thought appropriate that you would hear, hear, hear more about the program. I believe you were here, Jennifer, a few months ago with an annual type of report, but I will consider this an update, because we have you funded in part in the 2024 budget. And so we have the director and I believe the program coordinator, oh, here, right here, in front of me, the program coordinator here.
I said I would sit and help while she was presenting, so we'll, we'll tag team, if that's all right?
Thank you, Mike, for the introduction. And county commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm Jennifer Walker, the Director of your Greater St. Cloud RSVP program. Before we get started, I would like to share a few statistics with you all regarding our aging population. So according to a recent report that was put out by the Central Minnesota Council on Aging, they've got a report on their website that indicates, 2000, as of 2020, Minnesota has a larger older adult population than school-aged children. And according to the report as well, our region's senior population, and this is our region here, is expected to increase by 26.3% between 2020 and 2040. There is also an astonishing 56.2% increase of the age 85-plus population in our region in the next two decades. I'll repeat that again, a 56.2% increase in our 85-plus population over the next two decades. So just want to stress the importance of providing programs and services to support healthy aging to our residents in our communities in Stearns County is, is critical now more than ever. So RSVP has been around this area for the last 50 years. We're a program of the federal AmeriCorps seniors, and we're here to support older adults in volunteer service, to promote healthy aging, and also to help meet critical community needs. The City of St. Cloud has been our sponsor since, since we started in 1973, but we serve Stearns, Benton, Sherburne, and Wright Counties. RSVP volunteers are age 55+, our average age is 73. We have close to 1,000 members now. We've grown leaps and bounds since the COVID pandemic, when we, you know, we didn't have very many volunteers that were active. And so we're, we're really happy to, to be here and supporting older adults in our communities in Stearns County. They bring rich diversity, a range of ages, cultural heritage, and a lot of different professional backgrounds when they come to us, and assist in over 100 local human service organizations. And if you folks are looking for that report, I'll be happy to find it and share it with you as well through the Council on Aging site. RSVP plays a really important role in providing avenues for these folks to find meaning and purpose in their retirement years and to get involved. Our staff, Tana Quimby here, is our program coordinator. She covers Stearns and Benton Counties, and boy, do we keep her busy. She's, provides a personal experience for every older adult that comes to her office or contacts her to get involved in the community. In addition to that personalized relationship experience that we provide, RSVP enhances the experience for volunteers by providing a wide range of placement opportunities, both ongoing volunteer gigs and one-time community events that folks can be a part of. And then we do provide training to our volunteers, a variety of educational training opportunities, as well as accident and liability coverage, volunteer recognition, and transportation reimbursement, helping folks get to and from service, both with bus fare reimbursement and mileage reimbursement. And Tana, we can switch to the next slide. These are just a few statistics from our annual report from 2020. We welcomed 199 new volunteers to our program. This is unpresented growth for our program in one single year. We do an enrollment process where we find out what individual interests, skills, and timeframe are, and then match them up with opportunities to get involved. Some of our greatest areas, our local volunteers served tremendous impact last year, included a support to companionship programs and aging in-place services, as well as helping individuals access food through local, local food pantries and nutrition programs, within healthcare and wellness programs, and in addition to tutors and mentors with our K-12 partners within the schools and after-school programs. While RSVP's local priority is to include strengthening food security efforts, K-12 engagement, and wellness, that impact reaches far beyond meeting those community needs. And we'll go to the next slide. So I love to share these statistics. Every year, we do a volunteer satisfaction survey, and you'll see here that RSVP provides those social connections, and also improves mental and physical health, and enhances a sense of purpose and meaning. These results demonstrate the importance of being a part of community, especially as our social roles change as we age. We, I think everyone here knows far too well the negative effects of isolation, loneliness, and mental illness, especially for seniors. Recently, we had, we hosted seven different volunteer recognition events in our region in the month of August. We had about 500 members attend, at least, or attend one of our events, and we gave out some special 50th anniversary pens along with these cards, and asked folks to fill out what they, what they valued most about the program. And the, all of these are completed, the stack of testimony cards, the majority of them describes friendships and social connections as the most favorable aspect of the program. Want to just share a couple notes that were, that were shared. One volunteer said that RSVP is so rewarding, it opened up my life. I love to work with other people and make so many friends, friendships forever. Another member said RSVP improves the community by enhancing lives, both young and old. It brings generations together, which is increasingly important during this rapid digital era. And then finally, another volunteer described that this program is such an asset to older people. So many people discount our abilities, but RSVP builds us up. I am now going to turn it over to Tana.
So I think when we, when we talk about people and we talk about them being social, and you might think to yourself, is that really important, or isn't it important? Yesterday afternoon, I had three volunteers come into my office to get involved in the program. One woman had to have a tissue, her husband had died within the last year, and she was trying to figure out how to re-put her life together, and she was going to use volunteerism to do that. Social impact is important. The next fellow that was sitting in my office yesterday afternoon was a retired history professor from St. Cloud State University. He said, when I first retired, I didn't want to get involved in anything, and then now I'm ready to do something and give back. Social connections are important. The third volunteer was super busy and active with her family, and she said, I know I can't do anything right now, I can't do a lot right now, I'll get involved in some one-time things and help out, but in the long run, I know that I'm gonna need the connection of this program. So I look at our aging population growing and what this program can provide for this, this county, and I am just so proud that you are willing to support and be a part of this. So 60% of our regional, RSVP volunteers do reside in Stearns County. Of those 591 Stearns County residents that utilize the report, 105, or that use the program, 105 of them, or about 18%, are in rural Stearns County. I think about the fellow that lives in Albany, Minnesota, who drives to St. Cloud so that he can help with food security and food rescue for the Salvation Army, and then he picks up extra items and brings them back to Avon and to Albany, so that not only is he supporting the, the east side of your county, but the west side and some other stuff in between. So it's really neat when we see those volunteers. So I guess I promote more of the, the human side of this business. I think it's really important for you to think not just about the statistics, but of the individuals that we are serving. So these 591 volunteers, last year, served 58,586 hours, so that really gave back about 1.7 million to the county. So your support has just some amazing positive returns. So how our program works, again, Jennifer said, we get to know the volunteers, where they've been, and where they want to go, and what they want to do in the future, and then we get to know what the community needs. So we have 130 different nonprofit partners, nonprofit licensed healthcare facility and government entities, and they're all listed on the screen there for you, I'm sure in size six font, and all of you can read it. But the important thing is that there are 130 of them, and we could actually make it be 131, because Stearns County also has the opportunity to partner with RSVP, and you can request volunteers from us to help you with all kinds of things. Again, I have folks that are retired court reporters that would love to greet people or do some kind of assistance for you in that way. There are all kinds of things that volunteers can do, either on a one-time or an ongoing basis. So we try to get the volunteers involved and get them active. All we do, we give them a job description, so they know that they can see themselves in the volunteer role, and then we work with the community partner to get them engaged. So two areas that we are really making a big impact in this county are food security and transportation. So we have active volunteers in food security at the, at the Avon Food So we have active volunteers in food security at the, at the Avon Food Shelf, as well as Catholic Charities Senior Dining Services. We have folks involved with the Quiet Oaks Hospice House, the Recorey Food Shelf, and TriCap Transportation. I am aware that from our relationship with TriCap Transportation, that the county was having to pay for taxi cabs because we didn't have enough volunteer drivers. RSVP stepped up to the plate, and we now have 16 active volunteer drivers in addition to other ways. Cool thing about volunteer drivers, when I talk to folks about it, some of those recent retirees who still have pretty strong skills, that's a nice help for them, it's a nice financial help for them. So they're volunteering, they're helping, they're making a difference, but it's also helping them as well. So I, I think that we need to look again at the, the food security areas and the transportation areas. We come in to help wherever help is needed. RSVP ourselves has three signature programs that we operate. I'll talk about Warm Fuzzies first because it's the easiest to understand. People donate yarn to us and fabric. Our volunteers, who maybe are isolated and can't get out and about to volunteer, they're at home and they make, they knit hats, scarves, mittens, all of those kind of things. And then we donate them to area schools. So that when a kiddo is in the nurse's office, because their ears are frostbite and they don't have a hat, the school has something nice to give them, something that they can have for their own. So that's Warm Fuzzies. We also have a grant-funded program we're, we're working on called Happiness in Action. In this program, we use Centricare's bounce-back curriculum to talk with folks about the life and health benefits of having, living a life of happiness. And then the volunteers plan service and social events to support the community. This last year, we've done hundreds of birthday bags to share with the food shelf. We've done just a variety of different service projects. Now, you might think, again, that that's kind of the softer side. But are you aware, everybody knows what a random act of kindness is, right? Are you aware that if you witness a random act of kindness, studies show that you're, that you're lifted, that you, that you will be lifted, and it will lift your spirits for an hour, a couple of hours? And if you receive a random act of kindness, studies show that you will be lifted for a full day. Now, if you do a random act of kindness, such as volunteering, studies show that you'll be lifted for two weeks. There's power in learning about that, identifying that, and then working to make a difference. So when we tell these volunteers these statistics, and then they go to share those with others, we're, we're making a big difference in the health of this county. And the third and final program is that we operate is called Reader's Theater. We have about 60 volunteers, it just continues to grow. We have about 60 volunteers who, for the past 25 years that this program has been running, we, we send them out, the volunteers have taken popular children's stories, and they've written them into scripts. And then the schools can request our volunteers in groups of four to eight to come to the school and animatedly read the story. We don't act it out, we don't dress up, but we share our love of reading with the students in the classroom and encourage them to read. And every year, I get a call from at least one school who says, "When you guys read that story, it wasn't in our library for weeks. So many kids couldn't wait to read it again themselves." So Reader's Theater is our third signature program that we do in support of the area students. Last year, we, we performed for about 4,000 students in this area. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thanks, Tana. All right, so pictured here is our, our funding for 2023, our current funding. You can see where we get our funding and the range of different funders that support this program. The, the funding goes towards the administrative support for volunteer recruitment, placement, meeting community needs, and advocating for that productive aging, as well as that direct support to the volunteers. We have already mentioned that mileage, transportation reimbursement, insurance, recognition, trainings, et cetera. So we are grateful to you all for, for making the commitment to help us further support our mission and older adults in 2024. Our request for contribution will help support RSVP volunteers that reside in outer Stearns County. We expect to get full funding once again from the, the other local cities and counties that are listed here for 2024. The Stearns County funds will help with the transportation reimbursements of those outer Stearns County volunteers to help get to and from service, the volunteer recognition, and that individualized personal attention that we're able to provide. And we're, we're just thankful for that generous support, so thank you. On May 18th, you, you may have heard, we celebrated our 50th anniversary celebration and recognized the generations of volunteers who've contributed millions and millions of hours of service over the last 50 years. We do have an anniversary video with heartfelt messages and testimonies from a wide variety of community stakeholders on our website. You can find that at RSVPCentralMN.org. In the video, you will find that the Stearns County values very much parallel what our stakeholders say about this program. You're going to hear messages highlighting those values of respect, dignity, responsiveness, and collaboration. So please take a moment to, to find that video. And you know what, while I email you, I can email you that video along with that report from the Central Minnesota Council on Aging, if there's interest there. Last is, just if you have any questions or comments, we would love to hear any comments on what services or supports you would like to see RSVP provide in the future as well.
Okay, board questions?
Thanks for being here today. Got a few questions floating around in my head. You do great work. One is, what assurances have you received that any funds that we're putting into, re-putting back into RSVP are going to be used to supplement, not supplant? I do hear concerns from folks in general being worried about, is the city of St. Cloud's commitment going to continue to be strong? Is it growing? All the rest of that. So I mean, I think for all of us, I mean, making sure that this really can get to supplement your work, particularly in our Western part, and you, you've, you've addressed some of that. And with that, I'm wondering, you've done a great job showing roundabouts where volunteers live. Do you have data on where the services they're providing are as well?
Sure, well, we can, you know, we, we had the screen of the service, the agency partners, the community partners, that our volunteers are supporting specifically in outer Stearns County.
Well, and I think for many of us, Avon only is like partway through the county. So I mean, it would be helpful to know really Western, because that, that is part of, you know, Lee and I sat on the Central Minnesota Council on Aging Board on behalf of our county, and certainly know a number of the good things that you do. And, you know, how are we really getting to the, you know, the fully Western side? I know you've got a few people that are out there.
Can we ask Terrell, if, can we ask the question back just to clarify?
Thanks, Tana.
I'm sorry, let me just, let me just take that from you. Is there, is there a specific need that you are, that you're thinking about in that area that you want us to seek after and support, right? Because we do this work in tandem with you, and you guys are really experts in that area. Is there a certain need or a certain agency that you'd like us to look at?
There are a number of them, and certainly through the Council on Aging, I'm sure you're aware of, of those. It's, I, the, the board had stopped doing a contribution before I came on. We had a previous member who really thought we should only be doing contracts. And that was a question too, is it a grant or a contract, or what's, what would, what will the arrangement be? For, I think for us, clearly, a lot of the volunteers and services are linked to the eastern side of the county. And not to say that people on the western side don't get value out of it. But going back to even what you said, Tana, about the importance of socialization among others, we got a whole lot of other seniors who are throughout the county. So I think, in some ways, at least last year, when a presentation, or the last time a presentation was done, what a part of what I'd requested was, how will this expand services more broadly? And more volunteers recognizing $10,000 doesn't go terribly far, so I do want to kind of acknowledge that. So just kind of curious about that. And there, there certainly are an array of, if you're not already connected up with, what, you know, Lori and crew have been seeing across. I, I know that, like with, when the CARES money and some of the other federal money came through, we had lots of different services that were being done, including with services throughout the county. And odds are, there's an opportunity to gain volunteers through some of those efforts. We can talk more offline.
Sure, well, and with that, I, you know, our, our minds are always open to collaboration and supporting a need within the, within the community and now within the western part of the county. We haven't in the, we haven't had the funds to take our staff and proactively be present in the western part of this county. And so this support will, will allow us to better concentrate on what the needs are in those communities, as well as when you hear of a need. We would love to hear from you, so we can act upon that as well. To, was there a question?
No.
Oh, okay. So I think that, that's one thing that our staff is really, our, our current team is really good at, is having an open mind and going where there's a need. So we, we are open to learning about what those needs are. We're open to supporting any older adult in this county that wishes to get involved and serve. And for a while, that wasn't the case, because we, we didn't have, we didn't have the support. And so how, we can't take on more volunteers when we don't have the finances to support them. And about the city of St. Cloud, I, I don't see them backing down in, in their support, because we're getting $10,000 from Stearns County. They are, I know DNFA, our, our finance director is really hoping that these funds can go to enhance and support for the mileage and transportation reimbursement for those older adults in older Stearns County.
And recognizing, Steve, has something, just as a follow-up, and maybe Mike gets to you, is, do we have a way of putting in our, whatever our agreement ends up being, is that it needs to supplement, not supplant, other funding?
Commissioner Clark, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, back when we were reducing funding to a number of organizations, we actually did talk about doing a contract with RSVP. It just really didn't fit. But certainly, we could make that a, a condition of, of your appropriation, absolutely, yeah.
And I'd be okay if, you know, if we don't. I, I guess what, where I was leading to is, you, you mentioned it, is even if it helps supplement what other organizations do, I know sitting on the TriCap board, you know, there was a struggle there with the mileage reimbursement, that, you know, because some of the Western, you know, volunteers, even for TriCap, you know, it was a struggle because they were going through some of the same issues with insurances, reimbursements for mileage. And when you talk, you know, in talking to even some of those drivers, I mean, the excitement of just, you know, they're not getting paid for their time, I mean, basically they're getting mileage. But it, it's that social aspect, you know, they're talking with individuals they may know or may not know, and then they get connections and, yeah, it's, so I, you know, probably I was maybe one of those that voted against it way back in the day. But, you know, seeing the amount of volunteers just in Stearns County and, you know, and the good that it does, and I, just the social aspect, I guess I'm in support of the $10,000.
Is that a motion?
Well, do we need it, or it's in the budget already?
It's in the budget.
Mr. Chair, it's in, it's in the proposed budget as an appropriation.
And Mr. Chair, I mean, if you want us to, I think, I think you're going to find support here. I do think it is important, given some other aspects, that we're saying that this is, this is intended to supplement, so that we can expand, including if it's all volunteer driving, wouldn't that be amazing?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Commissioner Clark's concern for the Western part, for you to find out what you can do, obviously, the Painsill Area Center, Green Roof, they're a real active organization in that. And again, very good point of not replacing things that they're doing, but enhancing them and making what they're doing more effective. And potentially getting someone like the gentleman from Albany coming into St. Cloud. You may tap into some of those people that want to volunteer beyond Painsill, Cold Spring. Painsill, Cold Spring certainly would be the most involved communities that have kind of programs that could fit in you helping them, not taking them over, but helping them.
Oh, absolutely.
So, and again, as Commissioner Clark said offline, that you need to help make in connections there, you know, let us know, and we'll, we'll do that. I, I think, you know, we don't, I don't think we have to make it a condition, I think, I hope you're hearing us. And of course, it'll make it easier for us to continue that support if we find out that, yep, well, you have tapped into Painsill, Cold Spring,
Sure.
Melrose, you know, it, it'll make it easier for us to support you.
And I'm guessing you don't have a problem with saying, it's not about you all, it's actually, it's about the other entities, is making sure that they're not reducing their commitment.
Lee?
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't speculate that that is the case.
Consider it comfort language, then.
Do you, you indicated you had a list or, or a catalog of 130 nonprofit organizations?
Yes.
I would like to see that.
It's in your, it's in the back. It's on the presentation.
Yeah, we have that on the presentation, but again, it is pretty small font.
It's really small, I'm an old guy.
We can, we can certainly send that your way.
Can I get a hard copy of that, Dr. Willie? I'd appreciate that. Not specifically skeptical of this exactly, but I think the whole, I think the area of non, of the euphemistic nonprofit aspect of service delivery is frankly abused. There are some, even locally, some surprisingly large organizations with significant payroll that are classified as nonprofits. So I, I don't necessarily embrace the notion that somehow that's a special category. Either the service is needed or it's not, and one way or another will be, it will provide a benefit. So if I can get a hard copy of that, that, I think that'd be educational for me. I screwed up, I should have looked at that. But anyway, yeah, I didn't anticipate the discussion going in this direction. But, you know, every nonprofit that comes before us seeking funding is certainly doing God's own work. So I appreciate your
Sure.
additional effort.
With that, I agree, Lee, we've got enough entities and forces tearing apart this community and tearing down this community. This is an entity that actually builds up our community, and I appreciate that. In the outline areas, just
Road to hell was paved with good intentions.
Yeah, that's for sure. Just is, by recruiting those volunteers might spark it, I mean, and, and allow it to grow, whether you go out to Belgrade, Bruton, Sock Center, Melrose. Just talking to the volunteers that want to help, maybe they're looking for something to help, and they find that niche in, within the community, and it, it's, it's organic, it grows itself.
It's organic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And then I, I did notice, Sartell is not on that list. Have you approached Sartell?
We have, and they're in a very similar situation as the county here with providing funding in the past. And then when they built funding in the past, and then when they built their Sartell Community Center, they discontinued funding for other area programs supporting seniors, as they were focusing on their own programs to support seniors. However, we're working on it, and we're building relationships with the City of Sartell Administration, and we have, we have a lot of volunteers that live in Sartell.
Yeah, I see, I noticed a number of Sartell people in their pictures, and that's just, yeah, I'm just wondering why they would not be members, and I think that would enhance.
They are, yeah, well, the City of Sartell is, is not a funder at this point, but, but we're working on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate all of your comments and feedback and support, and we will take your comments with us today, and we'll work on implementation, and supplementing and expanding our services to your county. Last, I'd like to just leave, we have 50th anniversary pens here, for each of you to, to take and have, as well as a gift from us, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not appropriate here, but I think at some point, in the right setting, I'll ask how many nationally nonprofits there are, and have actually gone through the process.
I, I, I think it's a lengthy list, Lee, national nonprofits, yeah. Incredible, yeah.
I mean, I'm on the library board, and for some reason, we had a really challenging time qualifying as a nonprofit, took forever.
Okay, we got one more thing on administration, we're going to talk about the Justice Center, and then we have a break, do we want that break now, or are we going to go with it?
Let's go with it.
Okay, we'll go with it.
As long as it doesn't go long.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, we might need a pause.
That's Steve's parameter.
Exactly.
All right.
Mr. Chair remembers the, the next item.
Valuable presentation.
Organ pressure.
The next item is to adopt, to adopt the resolution authorizing the local sales tax, as you know, the county was authorized by the state last legislative session, to enact a local, local sales tax to, to fund the new, whatever we end up with for a Justice Center project, and part of that process of, of receiving that state approval, is that the board must acknowledge and accept that law to eventually take it to a referendum, and so that's the formal action that you have in front of you, is the resolution to approve that special legislation, and as long as we were doing that, we wanted to bring you a little bit of an update, because, as you know, you authorized, authorized us to move ahead with, with an RFQ process for both the construction manager and the architects to help us through the next phase of the project, and Steve, if you have something to add to that, please do.
All right, well, in the, good morning, commissioners, again, my name is Steve Hamis, I'm the Assistant Administrator, and in the interest of bringing you back into, you know, being on time, I'm going to be very short, Mike took most of what I was going to say, so I just want to point out again, that in the packets was the schedule of the RFQ, again, the RFQ was released on September 19th, we had some pre-bid sessions with vendors, vendors submitted questions during that process, the bids were closed on October 17th, staff are now reviewing all of those different bid packets to take a look at what was submitted, to make sure that everything met the requirements of the RFQ, and we're going to be looking to doing presentations from vendors the week of November 13th, we'll be doing presentations from both construction managers and architects during that week, so, just very, very short, very quick, that's, that's the timeline that we're on, again, we hope to be able to have contracts in place before the end of the year, because again, time is ticking, we want to be able to have good information to share with the public as we go forward about what the sales tax may be used for, so, again, the information only is just the timeline, and again, as Mike indicated, the action before the board today is to adopt a resolution acknowledging and accepting the special legislation.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion, and then I got a comment.
Second.
And a second to approve that, okay, your comment?
You know, all, all along, you know, we've had these different meetings on what this could look like, you know, and we got this big report, have we ever thought, and I know this is projecting out 2040, of doing it smaller now, with the ability to add on if needed, I mean?
Yes, the short answer, yes, you know, the various options that have been looked at in the needs assessment phase, did include not building all of the jail beds that were projected for the full build-out initially, but only building what was needed for a first phase, and leaving open space to do additional beds down the road.
Did that include court services and all of that, or just strictly the jail?
I believe it was courts as well, but I'm going to look, and Kevin nodded his head, yes, so.
Do the smaller footprint, and then, if needed, because, you know, maybe it goes the other way, and it's not needed, well, then you got an overbuilt.
And other counties have done it that way as well, Commissioners, Commissioner Notch, where it's been, you build a shell space for the future, you don't actually complete all the courtrooms in it, and that is something that, since Kevin nodded, was looked at in, in the needs assessment, again, the needs assessment is a very large 50,000 square foot view, and again, as we go into this next phase of design, we're going to be drawing that down to a 10,000-foot level, to really make sure that it, you know, looks at all those things, and actually does, you know, good blueprints to actually get a better financial picture of what this will be as well.
It's kind of like our preliminary budget, and you just hope you can make it smaller in the end. Gotcha.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, on that, along that line, did we, I can't remember when we did the, went to the stage, did we ask them to do just the jail, and the jail and the courthouse judicial center, did we ask for proposals?
We, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, what we've asked for was a complete build-out on two locations, because again, the board hasn't chosen downtown or not downtown at this point, we've asked them to do a full build-out of everything, with the understanding that we can cross out and redline anything that we don't want to do as we go through this process.
Before, Mr. Chairman, we move forward?
Correct.
Yep, and I think you said that, before the court decides, I think you meant the board decides, or maybe you did say board, and I just heard you wrong, I'm not sure, but how many vendors, Mr. Chairman, Steve, expressed interest, and how many are on the shortlist?
At this point, we have seven vendors that submitted, so we're going through those packets now, and reviewing them.
Four architects, three construction managers.
Correct.
And I think that's all we can release at this point.
That's all we can release at this point.
Right, but, but, Mr. Chairman, so there were seven total, and then you're going to create a shortlist, got it?
Of course, you've heard my concern earlier, I'm concerned about coming up with plans for two large facilities, or two smaller facilities, so we have four sets of plans, and then moving forward with one, I don't want to take us too far down the road with those plans, because those are dollars that would be saved, if I was building a house, I guess I would not come up with four plans, I would come up with the idea about which one I actually am going to build, and then move forward with those plans, so I'm concerned about not putting too much money and too much effort into the plan unless we've come with a strong decision on which way we're headed, so.
Mr. Chair, I think this is supposed to help us with that decision, because I don't think we're there yet.
Agreed, but I'm, I'm just.
And I'm with you on the cost.
I'm with the num, the cost.
I'm with you on the cost.
The cost.
Well, and Mr. Chair, I would say, once you narrow that list down, we could still make that determine, because they haven't started the work yet, so if we as a board say, mm, we're just going to go this way, and we all, you know, get majority agree, or everybody'd agree, then we should be able to shave those costs off.
And, and Steve, to your point earlier, I guess I would be interested perhaps in phasing as well, if that's what you're thinking about doing.
Right.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's why I brought this up at the last meeting, I still think, and I brought it up on Party Line yesterday in Albany, I still think, we need to make a decision, green space, downtown, everything, or one, the sooner we make that decision, to Steve's point, to Joe's point, to Terrell's point, you know, it's more practical, because now we've made that decision, now let's focus on that decision, that, the sooner we make that, I think the better off we'll all be.
Of course, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Bertram, as, as long as you want to say yes to everything I want, then it works, I mean, that's where, actually where our challenge is, is that we, we are hoping to get to the point where we're 5-0, and more information, or what they're going to bring us, could help us get there, because we want to, to present a united front, and right now, we're kind of divided, and it's not that we're not committed to moving forward in a good way, if, I really do hope that they're able to come back with us about how you, if we're doing entirely new, how we do that in a way that actually will help us with build-out and present the kind of justice facilities that we're needing to, to make that work, so, that's, that's why we're where we're at, we're, we, we're not, we are all committed, and we are in different places with parts of this.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Clark, that's, that's a good point, I will say the public is talking more about this, I think we're all including it in our columns, and we're doing, you know, we're doing outreach, we're talking about it on Party Line, so more and more people are talking about it, and I talked to someone who I consider to be relatively influential the other day, from the St. Cloud area, and brought it up, not in a positive way, and I was kind of struck by that, and it was, I was almost convincing him why we did need the jail, and how important that is, and what I, and I think I helped him understand that better, however, and I know every time I bring up school referendums, Randy says, well, that's a, that's a property tax increase, but tax increases are tax increases, and people are going to see this as a tax increase, the more unified we can be, the more practical we can be, the better chances we're going to have, and the more unified is the most important part, the better chances we have in, in fulfilling a real need, which may be one of them, but my fear is, what happens if we don't get anything, and that, that's one of my fears, because to be really statespeople, we need, we need to do something, and so that fine line of trying to do everything and failing, now what, then what do we do? So, yep, that's, we're not on the same page, and how soon we can get there, though, I think would be helpful.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bertram, I, I obviously agree with you, I also agree with what, an example, Steve, you've brought up, is that it's going to be important for people to get, if they pay, if they vote for this, it's going to cost them half the amount of money, because about half the people that are getting arrested are from other communities, about the half the people will be contributing to pay for it, will be from other counties, and so we'll have an opportunity to do it, also, is, the costs are only going to go up, you know, my hope, I think, like everybody else's, is that we don't default to what happened in 2012, when the then-board, I'm looking at you, Lee, because you are obviously the one who was on it, made the decision to update the current jail, I think we're, we're looking at those opportunities of how, instead of just doing that, we can get to the next place, and, and at least at this point, we're not quite there.
Mr. Chair, with, with the knowledge that I'm the only thing stopping you from having your break, I'll just make the comment, based on some of the questions or comments that were raised, again, for this RFQ process, for the divine, design phase, we are looking at a fixed fee for the architects and, and the construction manager to help contain the costs of this part of, of the work, again, we can have in the contracts that if the board makes their decision, we can cross out options as we go through, again, reading the materials from the different vendors, several of them do talk about helping the board to make the decision as part of their skillsets, from other projects they've taken on, as well as helping with the marketing and education piece with the public to talk about, again, the, the need for this going forward, so I think, again, we have good vendors in the mix, and hopefully, that'll be able to help both the board make their decisions, and work with the public.
Okay, all right.
I think we need to vote on the rest.
Yes, we do.
And I think you.
Lee?
I'm disappointed in the discussion so far, because you all focus on the jail, the reality is, the impact of the jail is part of the entire local criminal justice system, and it will, every aspect of the system will be impacted, so it isn't about the, the structure, it's, we're going to be putting on a whole batch of personnel, and in the course of the process, the real cost will be personnel, and the, if all you did was walk through the structure of the current jail, there was what would be one part of the tour where you'd step over what was a cement wall about, oh, eight inches, 10 inches thick, that was removed, remember, that started out as a joint facility with the city and the county, and when the, and at the time, everyone was of the impression that was a 50-50 project, it wasn't a 50-50 project, it was 80-20, and the city represented 20% of that facility, and in the first decade of that facility being in place, there were multiple interior changes, so the notion, there are some things that we can learn to look back on that, the, but the, the county attorney will be, be impacted, the probation parole folks will be impacted, every aspect of this, the public defender be impacted, the cost of the jail, as an isolated number, doesn't do justice to the impact over the next few years of what this will be, so you can, you guys can talk jail all you want, I'm going to talk criminal justice system, I'm mildly disappointed as the narrow focus of this so far.
Well, I kind of disagree, I mean, I mentioned scaling the structure, the whole structure, and not just talking jails, so.
Right.
And, and some of this isn't bricks and mortars, you know, I mean, that whole law enforcement thing, we're going to have more cop cars, for example, you know, but, you know, you, I, I'm just using that as a very narrow example, but you get the drift, so, take figure.
If you have growth, that you're going to have more cop cars, and, you know.
Actually, in my opinion, it isn't, it's less about population growth, because we haven't had that much, compared to our neighbor Wright County, now they've seen some population growth, what we have had is, thanks to multiple social factors, is far, it's a substantial increase in the need for a larger system.
Boy, that was polite.
So, as a result, we have to adjust to that, I mean, you know, five people like us are not going to change the direction, total direction of society, local society, so you have to adjust to what we've got.
I think the horses did.
Yeah. We vote.
Okay, we have the motion in a second, okay, any closing comments, if not, we're going to take a break after this, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes, and we'll take a break now.
I am actually hoping that we would be able to start getting reimbursed within two to three months.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll move that.
I've got a motion.
I'll second it and I'll have a question.
And a second on the issue? Go ahead, Lee.
I'll vote and I'll ask a question.
Okay.
Significant to our decision.
Okay. You folks know I've been working on this project for a very long time, and I've got more pictures of Town Line Rowan than my grandchildren on the cellphone here. So I'm very pleased to see this moving forward. So I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion passed. Lee?
Is Houston Engineering a multi-generational firm that's been around forever?
I don't know if it's multi... Well, it's been around a long time. They do a lot of work, for instance, for the Sauk River Watershed District, for the North Fort Crow River Watershed District. They have expanded their offices. They now, in the last few years, have put one in Maple Grove. They, of course, have a Fargo office. They're all over. So they are expanding rapidly over the past 10 years. But it has been around quite a while. I don't know the exact number of years, though.
You're too young to remember, but I think Sam Houston, Marmarum, St. Cloud, came out of that firm and he sold his interest to his relatives and came up and became a Harley dealer, so, here in St. Cloud. Anyway, I digress, but that's all. And it's not significant to the decision. That's why I waited.
One miscellaneous item very quickly. On Thursday, November 2nd, we are having a public open house for the County Road 133 Expansion and Roundabout Project in St. Joseph that's planned for next year. That open house will be at St. Joseph City Hall from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Notices have been mailed out, but I figured, and we'll do some news releases and social media blasts, but I did want to point it out here for the commissioners. I believe you should have received an invite as well, and then for the general public.
Did any feedback on that? And while it hasn't been public, but from associated professionals or whatever?
Not at this point. We have not heard of anything.
Jody, quick question on miscellaneous. Heading west through Stearns County, Highway 94, that surface being redone, boy, does that make a difference? But the ramps were done, I believe, as well, maybe in a better fashion. But what do you think about that fix? Is, as far as, that's just a small overlay? Is that all that is?
From my discussions with the MINDOT personnel, it was a short-term fix. They needed to do something. If anybody drove that, for instance, last fall, there were sections of pavement that were exploding. So they knew they needed to do something. They planned something shorter term, so they have time to plan for a longer-term, more in-depth fix that would involve some reconstruction areas.
Yeah. It's a smoother ride, but it's going to be temporary.
As a 94 driver, I am very happy that they did it.
Yeah, no kidding.
Oh, yeah. It is nice.
Anybody else something on that miscellaneous? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, and Becky Schlorf. We have three agenda items for you, and Becky will go through the first two.
Good morning, Commissioners. Becky Schlorf, Division Supervisor. The first of the two items that I have for you is to approve the 2024-2025 Natural Resources Block Grant Agreement. This is with the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. This helps fund the local water management planning, the Wetland Conservation Act, the Shoreland Program, as well as the Subsurface Sewage Treatment Systems Program. And it does include upgrade dollars as well for the 2024 year. You might notice that the funds are an increase for all of the programs, except for the SSTS program. That is a temporary increase from the legislature for this biennium. And then the SSTS grant increase, I understand, is a permanent increase. So with that, I can take any questions if you have any.
Okay. Questions for Becky?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Okay. Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion passes.
And the second item that I have is to approve the Conservation Reserve Program Incentive Pilot Project Grant Agreement. And this is, again, with the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources. This was before you, two weeks ago, to approve the grant application. So it's the same information as far as $30,000 available to our partners in the Sauk River Watershed Collaborative that signed on to the fiscal agent agreement with us. I can take any questions if you have any.
Question on the pilot program?
You need a motion on that as well. I'll move that.
Okay. Motion by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Terrell. Discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, the last item that we have is on packet page 134. It is consideration of setting a public hearing related to the interim use permit for Pearl Garden LLC. The 60-day timeframe is up soon, so therefore, we extended for an additional 60 days, which takes us to January 13th. We should have all of our information and findings created prior to that date. So the three hearing dates available for that are at the bottom of the item. I believe they are November 12th, November 28th, or December 12th. So any of those three dates work once we go through public...
14th.
Actually, those three dates, because typically what we do is...
November 14th. You said 12th.
Oh, November 14th. You're right. Thank you. November 14th, November 28th, or December 12th. Appreciate the correction. So once we get through that, then the board makes a decision. The findings of fact come back, and we want any findings of fact resolution to be approved prior to that 120 days. So that's why we have those three dates available for public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that. We set the public hearing for, I guess, to me, it doesn't matter if December 12th works better, or I guess I'll leave it up to staff or somebody on the board if they want to pick a date.
Do we have any issues with the township? Do they have any more input they'd like to give us on that?
I believe the township did have a meeting. I don't know the outcome of that. We can certainly ask for that information.
So, Mr. Chair, is your question in part, do we do it on the later end, or do we do it on the earlier end?
Yeah, I want to make sure we get input from the township, so...
Well, I'd be okay saying for December 12th, because then that finding of fact is a month later. So then that, we should get a lot of input from Zion or any township, I guess.
Right.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we got a motion and a second to establish that on the later date. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Okay. Randy, I think we're handing it to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Randy Schreifel, the Stearns County Auditor Treasurer, and we're going to do an update on elections today. With me today is Laura Loudenbach. She's the Director of Elections and License Center. And Roxanne Garrids, who's the election supervisor. And before I get into the agenda a little bit, I just want to remind people that, you know, in the county, there's multiple people that are involved in elections. We have between the city, township, the school district, we probably have about 80 clerks, and then we probably have about 1,000 election judges that are involved in elections. So it is a big process. A lot of people are involved, so just to keep that in mind. We're the face of elections today, but there's a ton of people behind the scenes. We're going to go through the 2023 and '24 legislative changes that just happened this last legislative session. We're not going to cover all of them. There was a lot of legislative changes, but we're going to hit on the high points here. Also do some Stearns County updates, and then other topics of interest. So with that, I'll turn it over to Laura to start going through the legislative updates.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Like Randy said, there were a ton of legislative changes. We're just going to cover the ones that impact our citizens and the county the most. So first one, felon voting rights were restored. This actually went into place June of this year. So what that means is if somebody is in front of you not incarcerated, they have the right to vote. So it kind of takes away the confusion, because sometimes people would be on a work release or federal or out-of-state conviction. They might not have known if they were a felon. It just takes the guesswork out. So if they're in front of you, they can vote. So that's the first one.
Can I, I'll have to ask a question.
Sure, of course.
Does that include folks with bracelets? Are they considered in custody? Are they...
Anybody that's not incarcerated at the time. So if they're not in jail, they can vote. So, yep.
Certainly, I ask questions as we go.
Yeah, yep. Does that help?
And I almost, Mr. Chair, I almost hate to do this now, but because there was, there was a judge, Chamberlain Malax, that has added the former requirement back in and then had a memo about, in his opinion, it's unconstitutional, and that's being appealed. I mean, the whole thing is a very different way than doing things. Can you just address that? I know that the Secretary of State has said, everybody can do that. The law still stands. But for the public, you may want to address that.
Yeah, so there was a recent situation where, what you were referring to with the Malax County Judge, I believe, that case actually is now in front of the Attorney General, so Keith Ellison is looking into it, as well as the Secretary of State. They're standing behind the law on that one, because the law was changed. So that, we'll probably hear more information on that one, but it is in front of the Attorney General's office at this time.
Right, and my understanding is that there's been attorneys that are doing a special kind of appeal, a very unusual one, because the situation was unusual. But they're trying to, the message to people is the law still stands.
Right. Yep.
And hopefully, we'll know something soon, because people in some areas are voting already.
Right. Yes.
And what we've seen over the last few years, there's almost always a lawsuit going on in elections.
That's true. Yeah, that's true. Good point.
That dovetails into a question that I had, and Terrell's uniquely qualified maybe to address this, but has there been any feedback, pushback, concerns for the local judiciary? Or across the state about this matter yet, or is that going to be something they anticipate later?
I believe that the district and the Judicial Council will be dealing with that. I mean, because it is so unusual.
Okay.
My understanding is, right now, the word period is follow the changed law, and we're not the only state that has changed that law. So that's what makes this a little different.
And certainly, the county attorney's office is one of the offices we work with a lot, right? And they also, you know, have given the judges a heads-up that, you know, there can be, you know, items that need attention immediately, right? So certainly during '24, you know, we're all on speed dial, so any changes in law or interpretation that we need, they're there to help us.
And for what it's worth, I mean, I think, my understanding is this is public after the law's changed. They were all, all the judges were told now, eliminate that previous condition. So that hasn't changed, but we're all going to keep our, to my understanding, we'll have to keep our eyes open.
Okay, so the next one is under pre-registration for ages 16 and up. So basically, when you are a 16- or 17-year-old, you renew your driver's license, you can pre-register to vote. You can also do that online through the Secretary of State's office, in person, on a paper application. Those applicants will go into a queue in our state voter registration system until they're 18. So it won't be processed until after their 18th birthday. So that actually happened already in June of this year. The next one, protection for election officials. So this just basically prohibits activities with the increased scrutiny of elections around intimidation of election officials or interference with the election processes. The violators are subject to civil and criminal penalties. So what does that mean? Basically, it protects election officials against harassment or threats, dissemination of the personal information about an election official, tampering with voting equipment, ballot box, rosters, voter registration system, excuse me. It prevents the county auditors and clerks from creating or disclosing a copy of the voting system components' storage, except with legal authorization, and then prevents imaging of, prohibited for hard drives or any other components of election equipment. Anybody have any questions on that one?
Has this been much of an issue for us in the past?
Yeah. When we get data practice requests, of course, you know, we'll talk about the castle record, but, you know, the County Attorneys Association is doing more coordination, of course, but one county does, all of a sudden, if the other county doesn't do the same, then it's an issue. So there has been questions, and that's one of the things we've been working with their county attorney's office on, so, yes.
Yeah, but the county should be all on the same page. If they're applying state statute, should they not?
Laws can be interpreted right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right.
The next one protects election judge misconduct. So let's say a precinct would hire an election judge that maybe wasn't acting professional and that basically allows the county auditor or the clerk to remove that election judge at any time in neglect of duty, malfeasance, misconduct, or for any other cause. So for absentee or direct voting, so absentee locations, previously, in 2022, we were seven days of direct voting. That now went to 18 days of direct voting. Additional hours and days have also been added for absentee locations. But in Stearns County, we will have some temporary pop-up locations that Randy can authorize to take direct ballots, and that can be determined on whatever hours we determine makes sense. So they don't have to go to the 18 days if they're a pop-up temporary location. So the additional hours that we will have in November for the presidential election, so these are for the presidential November election. There's an additional Saturday, two Saturdays before the election. And then the hours from Saturday were 10 to 3, they go to 9 to 3. So, and then there's a Sunday before the election. The week before, on Tuesday, we will be open till 7:00. And then the Monday before the election, we will be open till 5:00. And that's for the state general only.
Laura, just a minute.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, it's not us, the county's not doing this, but whenever I see that, of course, I'm not that old, but I always think of what an honor was to vote, you know, that day. I mean, you just didn't miss, I never miss an election. And again, just, I suppose, a little bit of an editorial, how easy do you make it for people to vote? You know, where's that fine line? Or like, you know, of course, in the religious standpoint, going to church on Sunday. I mean, you can try to make it easy, but it still is kind of a civic duty. It's, you know, a religious duty or whatever. And the more we make it easy, does it, and again, it's not us, but it's just, I can't help but react every time I see that. But there, that's my editorial.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think...
In my brain, I keep now having to think of it as we have an election period, because like you, I grew up the other way, and now we have an election period. And it's hard to wrap one's head around sometimes.
Yeah.
So, you know, as election administrators, we were actually lobbying to have no absentee balloting on the Monday before the election. And certainly, when we didn't do have it on Sunday, it gives us a chance, because I mean, we're, the staff's all working overtime for, you know, two weeks before the election. So this certainly doesn't help administratively either, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, and you think with today's society, how quick everybody reacts to everything, that extension, it should be getting smaller, because we are that much more, I think, efficient, whether it's electronically or whatever, but we seem to be going the other way, where you got to have a bigger window, when in reality, everybody is, you know, I don't know, I just think it seems odd.
But Randy, if I may ask, having, as we've expanded opportunities to vote, have not our participation levels gone up?
Yes.
Yeah, certainly, whatever reason that is, that they've gone up, but yeah, they're a higher percentage.
Well, and isn't it also, I think this is right, that our highest voters are in the mail-only precincts?
Correct.
Something that none of my constituents, unfortunately, get to partake in. But it certainly has worked out well for a number of others. It's going to be interesting to see over time, our lifetime, what changes with any of that.
And, Mr. Chairman, to that part, point, Commissioner Clark, it really is odd talking to people two weeks before the election and say, oh, I voted yesterday.
Right.
And you're thinking, and again, I'm trying to make this transition where people were campaigning on Election Day, and that was a big deal, whether or not you should be able to do that or not, and now they're voting two weeks prior to the election.
Yeah, and people, one of the changes that's not listed here is a clawback treaty. It has been eliminated now, too.
I think that's on the next one.
Is it? Okay. We'll let her go from there. Thank you.
And, well, and just with that, it's just a matter of perspective, because as I was in Germany last month, in Bavaria, it's totally mail-in ballot, and it's a national election. And they were surprised that we still go to the polls. They just feel like, you know, that's the way they do it, and that's the way it should be done, so. And I know a number of states do mail-only. I believe Oregon, Wisconsin, or Washington might be that way.
Mr. Chairman, what's the word in German for vote?
Vote vol.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah. So just to be clear on the Stearns County mail-in things, the county auditor, I allow that. So, but it's up to the jurisdiction to decide if they want to do it, and of course, it applies to the smaller ones, right? The only thing we ask is pick a lane. So if you want to do mail-balloting, stick with mail-balloting. If you want to do in-person, do in-person. No switching back and forth, because that causes voter confusion. So mail-balloting is more work for us, the county, but that's fine for some of these small jurisdictions. It seems to make a lot of economic sense, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, I still can't get off my horse, so I'm sorry. When the boys voted first, they insisted that we go to the polls at their age. I was really impressed by that. So there is still kind of a sense of that to the younger generation. And, yep, making it accessible to everybody. You know, the only absentee ballot, as I shared with you, Randy, was my father. When he got older, we did the absentee ballot thing for him. But other than that, again, at some point, I think we as a society have to look at what Commissioner Notch and Clark, and we've all said, how do we make it a little bit less, you know, if you want to call it confusing or whatever, and get back to the basics, voting is still a civic responsibility.
Certainly administratively, we've added time and cost to the elections over the last 10 years, right? So, yeah.
Mr. Chair, if I recall correctly, part of that is, I remember Dave Wall's talking about that over time, you're basically having to administer two different systems.
Yeah.
If it was one or the other, even with all the timelines, it would be administratively less complicated and time-consuming. But people, I mean, right now, maybe we're in an in-between, maybe, I don't know. But right now, you're having to do an awful lot, and we certainly appreciate it.
You know, Minnesota, I would say, at least is behind our neighbors or were on early voting. You know, everybody around us was doing early voting, so we're getting into that more now. And, you know, the people in mail ballots, they can come in and do, you know, absentee or direct voting ahead of time if they want. So if they want to physically come in and put it into the machine, that's available for them. Also, on Election Day, they can come to the service center and vote in-person that day, too, so.
And I just know from door knocking, especially, I've been to doors where people would just, too late, have already voted.
Right. No, phone calls, I've gotten that.
And likewise, just with the number of snowbirds we have, too, it makes it very convenient for them to take care of their voting before they leave to a warmer climate, so.
Nobody, or I don't hear discuss, voting from a historical perspective. But if you look even back to colonial days, the trend, even to the start of our democracy, is that more and more and more people became eligible to vote over time. Now, some of those changes were so big that they caught our attention, whether we paid any attention or not. And one I would point to, for example, would be suffrage, women's suffrage. They didn't have the vote back in the day. And when you look at way back, you had to be a property owner to vote. So the, what we're seeing is our end of that trend to make voting ever more accessible to a larger group of people for some pretty good reasons. Now, sometimes, those reasons aren't appreciated until they're in retrospect, but, yeah, that's, we're part of the trend. We thought it was over.
So with absentee return and processing, that return deadline is now 8 o'clock on Election Day. That used to be a 3:00 p.m. cutoff for absentee ballots. And then the ballots actually now can be opened on the 19th day before the election. The clawback rule means that they can no longer claw back their vote. So if they change their mind and wanted to vote for somebody else, they can no longer do that 19 days before the election.
How many, how commonplace is it that we're, do we still, I'm sure we do, still see ballots that they don't fit, that they don't vote all the way down the line? Maybe they'll just be voting for one specific office, one specific race. How often, how common is that?
It's more common in the presidential.
Correct, especially the judges.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of times, like, and that's their right to vote for whatever candidate they prefer and whatever race they prefer. And then if they don't vote the entire ballot, some of that will be considered an undervote on some of the races, so.
Okay. All right. I didn't pay attention to voting patterns until Vietnam War. Something called the draft caught my attention.
And that's not in reference to the wind, I don't believe.
Right. Next one, electronic voting systems. So once a county has adopted the use of an electronic voting system in one or more precincts, the county must continue the use of an electronic voting system for all state elections in those precincts. So this became effective July of this year. And basically, it just means that the precincts using electronic voting systems or ballot counters may not revert back to hand counting. Write-in counting, write-in vote counting. So Stearns County already tallies the write-in votes for the federal, state, and county offices. The cities, actually, this is the new law, the cities may adopt the resolution requiring either that the write-in candidates submit a request in order to have their votes tallied, or the write-in candidates only have voters, or votes tallied, if the total number of votes, write-in votes, sorry, is greater than or equal to the fewest number of votes cast for a filing candidate.
This is, this is the latest superhero that people always write in. So it used to be the federal, state, and county, you had to certify, so you have to tell us, you know, make sure you tally the votes for John Doe or whoever else. So this now is moving that down to cities also, so.
Is Mickey Mouse still on that list yet?
We've seen Mickey Mouse.
That seems pretty popular.
So the township, school district, and other election district may adopt the resolution as well. And then one of the biggest things for this legislative session is that if the target area is not filled in for a write-in voter, or write-in, then it cannot be counted. So it has to be filled, the oval has to be filled in, in addition to the write-in. So it has to be filled, the oval has to be filled in, in addition to the write-in of the person's name. Okay. Candidate filing changes. So one of the things that will be required now is a non-government email issued address, email address. Judicial candidates can't be over the age of 70 prior to the date that they would take office, so that's a new one. And then if you were running for, you can file for multiple affidavits of candidacy if you were running for like a school board office and a town board supervisor. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, then with the judges, do they, do they timeout at 70? In other words, they can't run for reelection either then. Okay.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, it's based on a 70s law.
Yeah.
Can we say age discrimination? Because we're getting polled for 70, we're a little sensitive.
There's a, there's a now senior judge that actually sued about the state requirement. So it'll be interesting to see if that changes at all.
We could put it in line with the speed limit. That might increase the speed limit.
Oh, there's some thoughts running through my head.
All right. So next year, 2024, we're gonna have a couple more laws that will affect a lot of our citizens. Number one, automatic voter registration. So once you apply for your Minnesota driver's license, currently, there is a question that the staff will ask, would you like to be registered to vote? That will kind of go away if you've proven citizenship. So you have to have proof of citizenship on record. Once, so you're automatically registered through that, and then a couple other programs will also offer automatic voter registration, so that that voter will go into a queue. Then the state, Secretary of State, will actually mail them a notification within 20 days of them registering to vote. They can decline automatic voter registration at that time, but if they don't, it'll go into a pending queue for our state voter registration system. Just a reminder, for ID for all happened October 1st of this year. So to be a Minnesota resident, you no longer need to be a US citizen. I guess that was never really the law. Driver's license has never been proof of citizenship, but when the staff take an ID for all if somebody was, is not a US citizen, they have to put the documents into our driver's license program, which then determines if they have US citizenship or not. So does that make sense? Hopefully, that wasn't too confusing. And then the last one for next year, the permanent absentee list. Registered voters may request permanent absentee ballot materials to be automatically mailed to them for every election. This will be effective likely middle of 2024. And the previous process is that the absentee ballot, or absentee application would have to be required per election, or yearly, so.
All right. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some updates and what we've been doing for 20, in 2023. Some of the elections that we've had this year, in February, we had a special election that was in Melrose. And typically, a lot of our specials are either, they're usually a referendum, a bond referendum. So as we can see here, in February, the Melrose one failed. Then we also had the March township elections. We do have 28 townships in Stearns County that have elections in March. And then in August, we had District 487 and 876. The Uppsala one passed, and the Anandale one failed. Now, coming up in November, we've got four specials. We've got Holding Ford, which there's, actually, there's a regular scheduled one. Melrose has a board vacancy, so that is considered a special. And then we've got Eden Valley and Minnewaska. Those last two specials, we are not home county for, so those counties take, take the lead on those special elections. Coming up in 2024, we will have the presidential nomination primary, which will be held March 5th. We will begin training for that in early January. I believe that starts January 5th through early, early March, our training. Again, we'll have our March township election on March 12th. Then we'll have our state primary, which is August 13th in 2024, and we will begin that training in June of 2024. And then, of course, we'll have our November state general election. In between those, if there's any other typically special elections, which would, could be like a school election, we do have other potential elections that we could have in 2024 as well, but these are the ones that we know of for sure. All right. Some other topics of interest. There's been talk about hand-counting ballots. So we've, in some of our trainings and in conferences, we've taken a look at the difference between ballot counters versus hand-counting. So in looking at that, there would be a substantial increase in time and reduced accuracy for hand-counting ballots. Voters would not have the opportunity to correct errors made on their ballot. So for example, when you go and insert your ballot into the ballot counter, if you voted for more than, than was required, so if there's like a vote for three and you happen to vote for four, the machine would give you a message saying that you overvoted on that particular race. And at that time, you would have the opportunity to get a duplicate ballot and correct that error. We did an example. So with the township with 200 voters and a ballot with about 30 contests, we took a stack of 200 ballots, which would be hand-counted 30 separate times to tally votes. So if you look at 200 ballots times 30 contests, you're actually counting that 6,000 times. And then the election, yeah, election judges would need to count that 6,000, actually 6,000 ballots that you would have to count. So when we look at that, in our post-election review, when we had that in 2022, precincts, we did pick those precincts randomly at the canvassing board. Those precincts that were drawn was for Collegeville Township, the City of Sock Center, and St. Wendell Townships. We hand-counted those ballots for the post-election review, and we counted for the races for the US representative and the governor and lieutenant governor. Now, in 2024, of course, we'll count the president and vice president and the US senator and US rep races. For this post-election review in 2022, we had 3,465 ballots that we counted, times two races, and that was 6,930. We had 10 judges. We had five tables with two judges. And we counted that post-election review took us about three hours to complete, which equaled about 30 hours. So if you put that into comparison, if you would hand-count ballots, we typically have about 80% turnout in Stearns County. So if you look at hand-counting, that the time that it would take, there's no way that we would have election results in a timely manner. Post-election review is, that, we looked at that and then did confirm that the machine total accurately matched the hand-counted totals. So the results, there was one ballot where a mark was made outside the target area. And what happens at that point, the election judges that counted the ballots for the post-election review, they need to determine voter intent. In this particular case, it was Collegeville Township, Collegeville Township precinct one for the governor and lieutenant governor. Scott Jensen and Matt Burke was, was the candidates, and so that did change it from 656 to 657. So it was marked outside the target areas, target areas, so that, in that particular case, the ballot counter did not catch that. Any questions on that?
And it's, excuse me, Mr. Chair, it's not designed to catch that because it's outside of it.
It's outside of it, so it is not designed to catch that. That is correct. There was a recount in 2022 for the City of St. Cloud in Ward 2 Precinct 2. And so that was held over at City Hall. There was one change in there. Again, that was marked outside the target area. It was one vote for Dwyer was changed to Karen Larson after appeared that the voter originally cast a vote ballot for Dwyer, but crossed it out and voted for Larson. So in that particular case, the ballot counter is not designed to catch that as well. One of the recounts that happened in 2020 was the Jerry Rolfe one. There was a total of votes of 39,488. At that point, Jerry Rolfe told, vote totals were 18,002, and Eric Putnam was 18,318. It was outside the automatic recount window, and so Rolfe did request a hand count of the 2020 general election results. They started out in Sherburne County with three precincts, and that was for St. Cloud Ward 2, Precinct 5, 6, and 7. And after counting those three precincts, they did, they did withdraw their request for the recount. So in total for that race, there was 35 precincts. There was 26 precincts in Stearns County, five in Benton, and then the four in Sherburne.
So I don't know if you can remember back to this, but there was some reporting in Sherburne County that came out a little later, right? So they didn't, they didn't get things in as quick as I think some people were determining, so that caused some doubt with some people, right? And so candidates can do a recount, a paid one, you know, they pay for it if it's outside that recount margin. And they can decide to count one precinct, or 10 precincts, or however many they want, and they can start and stop when they want. So this is an example of that. If there's a concern about that, they have that ability to do that. Also, it shows that timely reporting is important for confidence in the election, right? So where the machines are very quick, you're gonna get results at night. Hand-counting, you're gonna have a bigger problem, right? You may not get results at night, so.
And remind me, Mr. Chairman, was there a difference before and after the hand recount?
For the Rolfe recount?
There was a one vote difference.
A one vote difference. But yep, they suspended that after those precincts in Sherburne County.
Again, the machines aren't designed to catch marks outside the oval, so if a voter does that, that's gonna happen.
But it was one vote.
One vote, yeah.
And Mr. Chair, that kind of reinforces the margin at which we tend to do publicly paid-for recounts, right? Because we know that there may be some of these errant.
You know, and
Votes.
Certainly myself and maybe Roxanne, some too, were around when we did hand-counts widespread. And, you know, people working a long day and then starting to count at nine or 10 at night and counting that many ballots, you know, they're coming in, during those times, I would stay there all night, and I would be there when people came in the next morning, right? Because the results were still coming in. The accuracy was not very good. And there would be some, you know, switching of, you know, transposing of numbers or other things, which we don't have any of that now. So I was part of recounts when we did the hand counts, and now I'm part of recounts when we have the machines. In the machines, you just don't see the problems, so. And I know people may not like to hear that, but that is the truth, so.
Randy, and yeah, that would be interesting to see if we would do the hand counting. Because like you say, if people were working in the morning at the polling place, worked till they closed, and then had to start the counts at that time, at what time does the fatigue factor kick in?
Well, and these were the smaller precincts back then, you know, St. Cloud still used the machines. And a large precinct, I don't think you could get done that night, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll contest that. When I was a township supervisor,
Yeah.
and you would, you know, Millwood had, I think, 500 and some registered voters back in the day.
Yeah.
If you're sitting there, I mean, you're setting everything up, you're there at probably seven in the morning, and polls close at eight, and now you have to count and then drive to St. Cloud to have them check, because I know what incident happened, our numbers didn't come out. Then you go sit in the back room, you know, after you've been
Yeah.
doing that for that long. I mean, you know how it is. You just, you're spent. I mean, that's
Yeah. And like you say, it's not counting just presidential or state.
Back then, there was no machine. I mean, you were counting everywhere.
Wow.
That was a lot of work.
Yeah.
And we were small, you know, that's 500 and something, you got, you know, three people there.
So, okay.
Okay. There was a Minnesota Court of Appeals. So it was Minnesota Voters Alliance versus Office of the Minnesota Secretary of State. And what that was about, it questioned the rule that any ballot board member could perform signature reviews. There was a petition that only trained election judges could perform this task. The conclusion of that appeal, the challenged rule in the statute, did not conflict because ballot board members can comply with both, with both, the rule was declared valid. So in Stearns County, our past and current procedure, all of our office staff and any office staff in, under Randy that helps us, our, our trained election judges, they go through the online training judge portion. And if we need them, we appoint them as ballot board members to perform the signature review. The signature review only required if identification numbers do not match. So what that means is if they have a paper application and they put in their driver's license number, but when they return their signature envelope and they chose to use the last four digits of their social security number, those numbers don't match each other, and so then at that point, the election judges would need to go to the signature. And if they determined that that was a match, then they would accept that absentee ballot. A little bit on election security. We've been talking about this a lot in our trainings with both the clerk and the election judge training. Again, this is something, a topic that we'll talk again in 2024. We have some ongoing community outreach to inform the public. We talked about physical security in the past, and going forward, we will partner with the Stearns County Sheriff's Office and local law enforcements. We do limit ID badge access to the election rooms, and we talk about, we have access to audit logs, and then we'll talk about chain-of-command procedures with our clerks and head judges. We are part of the cybersecurity. We team with the security team at the Minnesota Secretary of State's office, and we collaborate with the Stearns County IT department as well. Cast vote records. So what is a cast vote record? It's a report that may, may be produced from information gathered by ballot data. Counties are not required by state statute to produce a cast vote record. However, if a cast vote record is produced, that textual data from the file is public information, but there are exceptions to that, and that would be the date, time, order in which a voter cast a ballot, the method of the ballot cast, the data on how the ballot order was generated, data files that don't include all ballots in the precinct, and then data from precincts with fewer than 10 votes cast. If a CRV, which is the cast vote record, is produced, the report will need to be thoroughly redacted to meet the statute requirements, along with the legal review from the attorney's office, which would also add an additional expense.
Can I, how many counties do use that, or how prevalent is it?
I, I've known of two counties that have it on their website. I think Wright County is one that has their cast vote records on their website. I'm not sure who the other county is, but I, from my understanding, it's not widely used.
Okay.
Cast vote records, the federal requirement, federal voting system standards require that electronic voting systems have the capability to be, to produce a CRV. Each state sets forth requirements for if a CVR must be produced. In Minnesota, the state requirement, it requires that only a cast vote record is produced, that it must be made public after non-public information is redacted. So if we don't produce the cast vote record, it doesn't need to be made public. But if we, if we produce it, it's public information.
Okay.
In 2022, Stearns County did not produce the cast vote record. At that time, the cast vote record was an option that needed to be selected before programming began. Producing the cast vote record would have delayed reporting results on election night. Producing the cast vote record would have delayed reporting results on election night. And then also redacting any non-public information from a cast vote record is very time consuming, and that would add an additional expense as well.
Sandy, this is not open for public discussion? What, but I'm sorry, it's not open for public discussion?
Next slide is election outreach.
Yep, okay, so just going over election outreach, what we've done in the past. In 2022, we did five presentations to the County Board of Commissioners. We did multiple broadcasts on WJON, KNSI and CASM. And of course, we'd always do a lot of press releases and public notices. In '23, we did present at the Minnesota Superintendent's Office Conference. We were at the fair, we were at the youth event, and then of course, presentations to the County Board of Commissioners. So we're going to do more in 2024, like in January or February. We're going to try to get on the radio to talk about the presidential nominating primary. But, you know, we are interested in feedback and what you think would be appropriate and what you'd like to see here too, so. And then we just have some resources and if there's any questions.
That, that's it?
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
We, Mr. Chairman, we are glad that you didn't give this on Saturday like you threatened to do.
Well, if no one is going to speak, I'm just going to say something, Lee, if I can. We're not perfect, but I appreciate what we do. And I think, I think the public appreciates, a lot of the public that, that work the elections do with a lot of pride. And, and, and they do that as a civic duty, and I want to applaud them for, for what they do. And we're under scrutiny, but that's fine. Because again, every time, I think we've showed that we do the best we can. And I want to applaud your department, Randy, and those folks, Laura, and what, what, what we are seeing happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment?
Tito.
Okay.
I think this is an evolving issue, though. I think the, compare it to computer security itself. The, the bad guys that live by defrauding relatively comparatively illiterate computer users, especially among the elderly, that'll continue to evolve. And every time they come up with a new scam and a new security system is designed to protect that, the scammers evolve as well. So it's, hang on, I think we're in good hands, but I don't think this will be the end of it. But thanks for your efforts, Randy, Laura. Appreciate your diligence and you're underappreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mike, before we move on with issues by commissioner, Jeff, anything else?
I have one thing to bring up during issues by commissioners, but.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and.
Do you want me to do that now?
Well, yeah, we'll go right on the issues by commissioners.
I'm just going to let, let you know that this will be the last meeting that we're using our old agenda management system. We'll use our new agenda management system next time around. I'm very, I'm confident that you won't see any change. You're still going to go into your same folder, get your PDF copy. In the long run, we'll have you just enter into that system rather than the PDF copy. But for now, it'll look, it'll look the same. And I think towards the end of the meeting, maybe even after the meeting, next meeting, we'll show you the public facing side because that is going to change and it's going to look different. I think it's going to be much easier for the public to access all our meeting things. But, so we'll put that maybe at the end or even after your agenda next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, he's doing that just now, I finally got it figured out, now you're going to try.
No, that's what they said, you'll still go to the same folder and get a PDF copy today. So, you know, when, once you open it up, it might look a little different, like the board action requests are going to look a little different. But essentially, they're the same. I just wanted to maybe warn you that that's coming. Hopefully, we don't have any glitches and it all works fine.
All right, Lee, we're going to start down at your end.
No, I've had enough.
Okay. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, first, I want to recognize Jeff and Ellie Mergan, who had their 50th wedding anniversary. Three of us were able to be there and had a nice turnout. They were certainly enjoying themselves. He's not sure if he would be watching or not, as he told Commissioner Notch, based on his early rising. He likes to take a nap around 9:00, 9:30, so he either is beyond that now, or he is watching or he's not. But happy anniversary to the Mergans, I think we, he had a good turnout. A suggestion, I sent this to Mike so he can forward to you guys, we all are aware of the AED program, Joel Vogel. I mentioned this to Mike some time ago, they're, they're really doing some unique things throughout the county. And I do believe it would warrant a 10-minute overview at some point, what they're doing throughout the county, how, and again, they're not asking for money, but just for the, getting it out to the public more. And in St. Cloud, they've got, in the, in the St. Cloud area, they've got a real, real unique federally zoning in how they can, where you literally are told where the unit is and, and then directs you to the unit. So you'll, you can go on, you, you could get notified by cell phone, someone's having a medical condition. And then they tell you where the nearest AED is. You can go and get that and go to somebody you don't even know, potentially to save their life. I think it would warrant 10 minutes of our time to have an overview of that. Again, not for money, not for anything, but for public, getting the word out for public awareness and everything else. So again, I'm always still confused on getting things on the agenda. I don't know if we should do that right now or however you want to do it. But 10 minutes, I don't think is asking too much for a worthy program. And again, they're not asking for money. So I don't know how you want to do that.
If the board wants to do that, we'll, we'll schedule it.
Can at least three of us at least admit that that might warrant that?
I was just thinking, there's other entities too then, so we just think about that as time goes on. I don't have an objection, and there's a whole lot of things that are changing technologically in this area that we're working on as a state, as well as through NACO, and so maybe.
There's no action for the board to take on that.
Correct. So I'm hearing a consensus that we'd be open to doing that then?
Sure.
Okay, and then.
When it works, when we don't have a long agenda.
Right, it's no urgency whenever you want to, Mike, we'll piece it in. And then just an observation, today we had six grants in front of us. And I know this is the way this process works, but it is kind of interesting. All these grants, and most of them were not matching dollars, but kind of, and I know this is the way it works, you know, but it is kind of interesting, just in one agenda, that we had six grant actions, you know, that we had to act on. And then the last thing is the solar process obviously continues. Lake Henry Township now, as we've been informed, has done a moratorium, Zion has done a moratorium. Applications are perking up again. I know there's been some conversations amongst commissioners that we maybe should talk about at some point, whether or not we should change the process of applications going straight to staff. Should we talk about maybe the townships being notified, even if they go to staff? So again, I don't know how to bring that to a head, to have a conversation, to revisit that action that was taken back in 2022, I believe, to circumvent the public process as far as notification to townships, neighbors, things like that. I do think, I heard it on, on Thursday night at the township meeting, I've been hearing it, obviously with two townships doing the moratorium. I think it warrants at least a discussion about, should we look at changing some of that process that was approved in 2022? And again, I'm asking that to be discussed and see if we can't bring that discussion forward.
Are you suggesting we make that more of a local process? I'm thinking that would have some wisdom.
Minimumly that potentially, but minimumly notification to the townships. Townships don't know that an application's been made unless somebody tells them. They're not notified, neighbors aren't notified. And if a township wouldn't be told by someone that, you know, that there's an application in your township, they wouldn't know that's going on until the construction would start. And it just kind of seems, I mean, I think Mike made a comment that was right on about how receptive people, township officials are to the county and how that's changed. Mike's there, Randy's there, you know, the sheriff's department, that was a little bit of a disappointment that the chief deputy showed up. But, you know, overall, as long as he stayed during the whole meeting, I thought. But overall, again, the county is perceived as being positive. We are a resource, we are working together with them. Well, then they don't get notified when something's going on in their township. It's a, they're, that doesn't sit well with everybody. So we should have that discussion of local decisions, having townships at least notified, whatever, in my opinion.
I, I guess I just have a little concern about not notifying townships in small cities in that, for example, in Albany, you've got solar gardens, you know, coming up near the edge of town. And they may not be aware of that happening, and they maybe actually have a plan for expansion, commercial development or something where, where it's township area. At least it'd be good for them to know there's a, a plan for a solar garden coming here. And you say, wait a minute, is there something we can do where we're going to extend the utilities? Because if you put that solar garden in there, that's a 25-year commitment, or if not longer. So at least give the awareness that it's, that it's happening, so, yeah. I, I, I can see that being an issue. We'll, we'll continue on, Steve, you want to?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to finalize that, I mean, how do we finalize that again?
Again, I, if the board wants to have that discussion, that's fine. I think that notification process was because it was a, you held, you often held a public hearing on those. So there was, I mean, that was part of the process. And now these are approved administratively. And so there's, there's not a chance for a township to influence.
Mike, are there other things approved administratively where there's no notice?
I'm looking to Shelley for some help here, but.
So it's not unique.
Okay.
And where there is a moratorium, this doesn't go forward.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there are a significant number of actions that are taken by staff based on those things that are considered permitted uses within the zoning district. So all of those things that fall under permitted, we go through a process. We make sure it meets all the ordinance requirements, and then those are approved. So only those that fall under interim or conditional go through the planning commission and then here to the board. So there are various processes depending on the type of use within each district. And we can have further discussion on any of those, all of them, however you would like to do it. Any of those are always up for conversation.
Because if I can ask, so if a township doesn't have their own planning and zoning, and I buy 40 acres and build a house on it, the township's probably not going to get notified either?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, my reaction to that would be two wrongs don't make a right. There's, the township officials are kind of asking for it. So I guess for whatever it's worth, I brought it up.
Well, in, in regards to that, you know, I guess I've been thinking about the solar, and there's a couple of things, maybe, I don't know at what point we revisit that ordinance to maybe make a couple of either improvements or changes. You know, one, one of my thought of, if you go by a lot, you know, the screening, you know, has always been an issue. You know, is, a lot of these shrubberies, whatever, start really small. You only take 10 years probably before they get higher in the fence. You know, would it be advisable to start them at six feet high? Or the other thing is, you can get these ivies that would just block, you know, crawl up the chain link fence, you know, and screen it almost in two years' time, you'd have the whole thing, you know, screened. And then the other thing is, you know, right now we require pollinators. But, you know, maybe a plus would be grazing, like especially, you'd have to limit it to probably sheep or something that's not going to damage it. You know, from my understanding, as you go out east, you'd see a lot more like sheep grazing. You know, because it is an egg, but permitted use in egg zone, so if you can graze sheep in there, I don't know.
There are sheep in, the one in Panzo, there are sheep at some of the goats, I think more than sheep.
But I think those, that they require pollinators.
I, I don't know about those, when they require pollinators, I think there's some opportunity here, is what I'm hearing. You guys all say that you want to have a, a review of that. And we can review solar, we can review any other uses or concerns related to how we do our business. But that's always a good thing, not a bad thing.
And one other thing I have, well, because I'll let Terrell maybe project connect or whatever. But so being on the fire and rescue, so EMS has a training now too with a, with a Narcan, Alaxone. I don't want to say dummy, but, you know, we're, actually, they come out now and train. If, if the, the signs at a patient and you actually administer a Narcan, you can watch, you know, what happens. I mean, it's, it's a pretty unique tool, you know, so there's a lot of tools out there that I think, you know, going with AEDs as well, you know, that most of us probably aren't aware of unless you're in that, you know, arena. I mean, it is unbelievable, you know, training mechanism to use for Narcan, Alaxone, you know, incidences. So that was just something I just wanted to share. Oh, and the Vikings won last night.
Well, I found out. Okay, Terrell.
So I was going to bring up Project Connect, which is going on right now, which is something that our staff are very involved with. And if there is anybody listening that knows of somebody who's homeless or has some challenges with resources, they could come over to River's Edge right now to get connected up with services, including their, do some, our courts are doing some interesting things with warrants, et cetera. And then as we were conducting our meeting, Congressman Emmer is now going to be the most recent speaker nominee, which would certainly be great for the sick people of the sixth district, so we'll keep an eye on that. And there was a, I just saw an article that popped up about using, the benefits of using sheep for grazing. So there you go. And Mr. Chair, given the time and the commitment to going over there, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
I think you have a related item, actually.
Yeah, bringing up Congressman Emmer, I, I was last week in DC on a trip with the APO, and we met in his office. First of all, the APO trip, we wanted to thank them for all the congressional directed spending dollars that we had had in the past, and also submit some new ones for the APO. Just to let you know that Sock Rapids is in line for $5 million to bring the Beltway around the northeast side of town, around the high school and connecting to County Road 29. We also were talking long-range plans about the river crossing on 33rd South for, for the area, and then as well as Highway 23. Met with all three legislators on the, on the House side and the two senators talking about, you know, making improvements in the four lane out to 35W on Highway 23. Also did one, also Jeff, you mentioned Nellie and Jeff, the hats off on their anniversary. It was quite a good, good time on Saturday. And then one last issue is Mayor Kleiss had contacted me about the ongoing issue of addressing the homeless. And he, he wanted to make sure that we were kind of coming together on that. And by all means, it was a good conversation because I, I do believe it's, it's not a St. Cloud problem. It's not a Stearns County problem, it's not a Benton County problem, Sherburne, Sock Rapids, what it is, it's, it's a regional issue. And that we do need.